Everyone, if I can have everyone take their seats, please. Our clocks aren't totally correct on the wall. It is 7:01. I'd like to get the meeting started. Thank you all for coming. Great, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before we do approval of the agenda, I would like to remove item 4.3, rezoning and development application forms from tonight's agenda. There was a direction and motion to staff on May 23rd to have all of these items come forward at our soon-to-be-developed Development Committee. So 4.3, the rezoning and development application forms, will not be discussed this evening. It'll go to our Development Committee once that forms. So with that and the new business on our yellow sheets in front of us, could I please get an approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, so first portion is our reports coming forward. So the first one is 4.1, and it is 2614 Otter Point. Both of our reports this evening are to do with telecommunications towers, as you all know, that's why you're here. Just to give you a little bit of insight, staff has provided a little bit of notes here. Because this is the first cellphone tower meeting that our staff currently has had, we just wanted to put out a few, just public notes out there to let you know that this is the public consultation process in which the telecommunications company seeks. And I believe that they've sent out notifications to local stakeholders and residents within 100 meters of the proposed towers. And there's two. Okay, thank you, sir. We'll get to that. We'll get to that after. So what I've been told is that properties within 100 meters have been notified. The municipality actually has no regulation and jurisdiction when it comes to cellphone towers. It's a federally mandated regulatory body. So our position tonight is to hear all of your comments and then provide feedback to the company. So that's what we'll be doing tonight. And it's a committee of the whole, so it's not quite as formal of a setting as our council meetings, so there can be dialogue and there will be public information at each session. So everyone that's here tonight will have the opportunity to speak if they wish to. So having said that, let's go into 2614 Otter Point Road, and this is the Freedom Mobile Telecommunication Tower. And just to staff, is somebody speaking to this?
Your worship, there was, there's a report for both applications in your, in your package. And rather than regurgitate the report summary, the representatives of the companies are here, and I think it would probably be more prudent to let them describe what their applications are and what they are expecting from the district. I'd be more than happy to answer questions from the package. However, I think that from a timing perspective and an information perspective, it would be appropriate to have them come forward.
Excellent. So if we can have the applicant come forward, please, and just turn on the microphone, please. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Committee of the Whole. My name's Tawny Varigan, and I'm here representing Freedom Mobile regarding a proposed wireless installation in Sook. So just a little bit about Freedom Mobile. They have emerged as Canada's fourth national carrier, which is a key objective of the federal government's goal in creating more competition. Freedom Mobile celebrates serving over a million customers with its network, offering a variety of voice, data, and internet services. Shaw owns Freedom Mobile, meaning they are owned and operated as a Western Canadian company. Freedom Mobile plans to launch its wireless service in the Greater Victoria area and is proposing this installation in order to provide dependable wireless data and voice communication services. Some of the benefits of Freedom Mobile being the fourth national carrier are lower rates for families, students, and small business, more choice for citizens and their wireless needs, and more local and regional employment. A few wireless trends. Nearly 70% of all 911 calls come from mobile phones. Improved service gives better access to emergency responders like fire, ambulance, and police. There are more wireless users than ever before. Residents, businesses, and visitors are utilizing wireless data at unprecedented levels. One smartphone creates as much data traffic as 35 basic feature phones, and people have come to expect wireless service as a basic utility. More Canadians own a cellphone than have landlines. In fact, 73% of Canadians have a smartphone. People have come to expect high-quality wireless coverage and data speeds within their communities, and in Canada, mobile data traffic will grow five-fold from 2016 to 2021. So the way a network works is it's a series of cell towers with a base station in various geographical locations. When a base station reaches its maximum capacity, the coverage footprint shrinks in order to handle the volume. New base stations must be built in order to fill the void areas. The proposed site is located at 2614 Otter Point Road. The property is zoned rural residential and consists of a home and a few outbuildings. The surrounding lands are similar in use with rural zoning and a mobile home park across the road. The proposed monopole location is shown in the site plan. It's proposed to be set back 95 meters from Otter Point Road against a mature tree backdrop. The proposed 50-meter tower will have three flush-mounted panel antennas and two microwaves. The panel antennas create a monopole with minimal visual impact. The pole and equipment will be painted green to reduce the overall visibility. The monopole and two equipment cabinets will reside within an equipment compound located at the base of the monopole and enclosed by a chain-link fence, occupying an area of 6 by 3 meters. Here is a photo simulation of the proposed installation. As you can see, it's painted green and against a mature tree backdrop. So why this location? Freedom's RF engineer has identified the location will fit in with the network plan to service this area. There are no buildings or towers to co-locate on in the vicinity of the proposed installation. The closest tower is owned by Telus and is 1.5 kilometers southwest. The property consists of a single-family dwelling and a few outbuildings, and it's well set back from Otter Point Road and partially screened by mature trees. This is a coverage map showing the other proposed sites in the area. There's an approved tower at 7450 Butler Road, a proposed tower at 2326 Kemplake Road, a proposed rooftop at 6726 Eustace Road, and another proposed tower at 6228 Sook Road. The subject site is labeled in orange and shown in the middle of the map. Without the addition of this site, BVI 89, there will be a compromise in continuous coverage. The proposed site will provide coverage to an area within a few kilometers. Regarding health and safety, Health Canada has adopted Safety Code 6 to establish safety limits for human exposure to RF energy. ISED has made compliance with Health Canada's Safety Code 6 a condition of license for all wireless carriers. As outlined in Safety Code 6, it is the current invalidated information for protecting the health and safety of all Canadians. Canada has one of the most rigorous safety codes in the world, and Health Canada stipulates that precautions to limit public exposure to RF energy from base stations are unnecessary because worst-case exposure levels are typically thousands of times below those specified in the Health Base Code. The diagram in the top right is comparing RF energy from a cell site to other common devices found in the community, such as a Wi-Fi router, baby monitor, cordless phone, and FM radio transmitter. The diagram in the bottom right is to demonstrate that Health Canada's limits for general public exposure of RF energy are well below the threshold for potential health effects. Regarding the consultation process, we followed the District of Sook's Communication Antenna Policy 11.4. We sent notification to properties within three times the tower height, 150 meters, on May 12th. A total of 24 notification packages were sent. Newspaper notices were placed in the Sook News Mirror on June 7th and 14th, and also in the West Shore Voice News on June 2nd and 9th. We've received one comment of support and two comments in opposition, expressing concerns related to health and safety. The site will be far below the allowable Safety Code 6 limits, in fact, thousands of times below the safety limit established by Health Canada. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you for coming. So I think the next, I'll look to council if they have any comments, and then we'll open it up to everyone that's here that want to speak to this one on Otter Point Road. So councillor Ray.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question. You sent out all the packages. Did you get any returned?
No, I don't believe we did get any returned.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councillor Loggins.
Thanks for coming. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold if I have to stop and cough. One of the questions that I had was specific to the Telus Tower being 1 and 1/2 kilometers away, and the federal government's requirement for any new towers to first share, modify, or replace a currently available structure.
That tower's located too far from the area that we're trying to service, so co-location is not an option for this site. It won't fit in with the overall network plan.
So what is an acceptable distance?
Well, the, there would have to be an existing tower within the vicinity of, like, within a few hundred meters in order for it to work with the network plan.
With Freedom's network plan?
Exactly.
But does that comply with the federal government's regulations?
Yeah, we would have looked at existing towers first, but because this area is so large, we are unable to co-locate, we need to build a new tower. There aren't any in the vicinity of, that we can co-locate on to support the network.
Okay. Does it entirely answer my question? Because to me now hearing, like, it sounds like we have to have a tower every few hundred meters. But...
Well, on the coverage map, it showed sites anywhere between 2 and 5 kilometers apart.
Okay, 2 to 5 kilometers. So has Freedom contacted Telus and their tower to see if there is an option to share, modify, or replace the structure?
Maybe I can ask Erica to answer that question?
Yeah, if you could come to the mic. We webcast all of our meetings, so the microphone is important for everyone at home. Thank you.
So Erica Rijic, I'm the manager of Real Estate and Municipal Affairs for Freedom Mobile. And so just as it pertains to our network design, our frequency is different than our competitors' frequency. And so when we design our network, we have to, we have to ensure, and it was sort of the honeycomb picture you saw, that the locations of our antennas, so whether it be on a building, on a competitor's structure, or a new structure, which is obviously our last choice and community's last choice, they have to be within proximity so they overlap, but don't overlap too much. So there really is a lot of art to the science of designing these networks. And so in that, in that design, we are not currently providing service in the Sook area. And so we came to council some months ago and said we had a, a concept for our design plan, and presented that, and then have worked through the details of where we can actually locate. It not only takes the engineering piece to come together, but also willing landlords and the right elevation. So there's, there is the physics behind where we need to locate, as well as the practical reality of having a location that, that someone is interested in, in hosting and accommodating our network. So all that fits together. So it is a lot of moving pieces.
Thank you. I understand now how that works within your framework, but does that align with the federal government's requirements to share, modify, or replace the structure?
It does, because they understand that, that they are the governing agency that issued those frequencies. So they understand, I mean, the kind of the point is that we had to have a different frequency in order to have an autonomous network. And so that difference means that the engineering is different, but where we can overlap, we do. So I would say that approximately 30% of our network nationally is co-located on our competitor's structures, so about a third. The reality is that unfortunately, in this area, there, when we did our design and had sort of those anchors to be able to connect our frequency into the entire region, the Telus didn't fit with our design.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from councillors? Seeing none, I will invite anybody from the public who'd like to come and speak about the telecommunication pole on 2614 Otter Point Road.
We still have a chance to ask questions?
Oh, absolutely. This is right now. For anyone that wants to speak about the telecommunication pole on Otter Point Road, please come up right now.
Okay, I'll come up first. Oh, well...
If I can just get you to speak into the microphone and state your name, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
I'm Jane Jolly, Otter Point Road, and I've lived up there for 44 years, been an educator in this community. Always felt very safe and very well taken care of in this community, and I would like to see that our community and neighboring communities continue to be safe in the way that we always have been. I, I put a letter together, that it's not in this package, so I'm just going to summarize it. I, I think it will go in maybe tomorrow. It seems like Sook landowners are being tempted by Freedom Mobile to place antennas on their property. They're offering $15,000 a year, and they're reinsured by Health Canada standards that they are safe. And there's research out there that you can find, both sides of the question. My husband and I were just recently met up with an old friend in Europe. We found, she was so aged so much, and we went, wow, what is wrong with this lady? She has a radiation illness called electro-hypersensitivity from radiation, and she, and it's also called the rage, the rapid aging illness. And so we're relying on Health Canada to keep us safe. We think that we are totally protected by Health Canada. The fact is that we are absolutely not. We have some of the lowest standards of safety for our health when it comes to RF radiation illnesses in the world. We just started to do a little bit of research ourselves, and we're just blown away by some of these facts. And there's, there's doctors, there's university professors in Canada that are some of the best in the world, that actually have proven that these radiation illnesses are, in fact, very, very dangerous, what comes from these towers. What comes from the towers is a constant source. It's not like we can turn off the baby monitor, turn off our cellphones. We have control over those things. Cellphone towers and antenna, we, we do not. They're going to just be sending out. So I'm, I'm just going to jump down here. So besides the health issues, you can decide, people can decide if, oh, well, Health Canada is protecting us, and other people say, no, they're absolutely not. It's also come to light that if you choose to have one of these towers or antenna on your property, that you can be sued for damages, for health, for other people. People do not know that. Absolutely do not know. It's a whole ballgame for all of you and all of us. And I'm going to just jump down here. We need some changes to our bylaws to protect us. You know, Sook has always been good to have some great protection and bylaws for us, and our neighboring communities, whether they're on the other side of Kemplake Road, they need protection too. Everyone needs to be educated about the dangers of radio frequency radiation. New cell towers that are being applied for, they're trying to extend their businesses and make money. It's not necessarily about better service for us. I live across the street from, from where they're putting in this tower. I have no problem with my cellphone. I have no problem if I have to call 911 and get some service. It's not that we are lacking services particularly. It's another company and a business that is asking for their company to have business and that is putting our health at risk. We're fortunate to live in a rural area where there's land for such towers. We've got all these hills around us, and these towers need to be at least 500 meters from our homes and our schools and our communities. So thanks for the opportunity for this feedback. Cell towers in our backyards are not safe, according to the little bit of research that we've done. We need updated bylaws to protect us, as well as newer guidelines for Health Canada and standards. They're all going to take a while to come along, but we've got to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jolly. And just to, we, council did receive... Excuse me, everyone, everyone. So remember that this is a committee of the whole meeting just to get input, and please also remember that we're not the regulating body. We're here to facilitate public comment, so I asked everyone to be respectful of everyone and others' opinions. I just wanted to add, Ms. Jolly, that we did receive your letter, so council does have it in their package. Yes, yeah. It was under our new business package in the Yellow Pages. It's number six.
So I didn't summarize.
Yeah, no, thank you. That, in your opinion, is noted. Thank you very much. If anybody else would like to come and speak to this, on 2614 Otter Point Road, the microphone is ready for you.
Anybody bring their sleeping bags?
If you could just state your name, sir. Thank you, that'd be great.
It's Wayne Jolly. I live at 2625 Otter Point Road. This is kind of lengthy. I'm sorry that it is, but there's just so much information out there, it's, it's quite a task to actually sort through it all and find out what's really going on. I noticed in Freedom's presentation, you know, they overplayed all the benefits and they just relied on Health Canada rules and safeguards, I guess, as their criteria for telling our community what's safe and what's not safe. As my wife said, that, that Health Canada, in opposition to what Freedom said on their handout, it's really has some of the lowest standards in the world. Australia, US, and Canada are probably 100 times worse as far as protecting its citizens than almost every other country in the world. So I'll start with this, and when I first started looking into this, I came across some research by Dr. Magna Havas. She's an associate professor at Trent University, and she's internationally known, renowned scientific advisor regarding cellphone towers. She lectures at universities across Canada and around the world. She's presented 250 presentations on this, considered one of the most foremost experts in her field, considered an expert witness as far as the Canadian Courts of Law is concerned. And she did a presentation in Ontario, "Cell Towers, Are They Safe?" It was 52 minutes long, and I advise everybody to go onto the internet and look at YouTube and listen to her presentation. It includes a woman who, and this is in regards to, I think it's a real mistake if, I know we're not talking about the, the cell tower proposal for the Legion, but it's all in the same, really, concern that we have, and it's in our community. But this woman, after three weeks of having cell towers above her head on her roof, came down with some very serious illness, and her daughter as well. And after three weeks, the daughter couldn't even hold a glass of water in her hand. These, this stuff is, for some people that have the sensitivity, it can be very, very severe and ruin their lives. So in 211, the World Health Organization classified this RF radio frequency radiation as a Class 2B carcinogen. What that means is that it's a possible, it could possibly cause cancer in your families. Class 2A is probable, and right now, the science is pushing for this around the world. And in European countries, they've accepted this, and, but a lot of countries are really believing that it's a certain cause of cancer, which is a Class 1 carcinogen. A study of firefighters in California, and this is still under Dr. Magna Havas's presentation, she worked with them, and in a study, they, they had, they had cellphone towers on their roofs in California and around North America, around America, and some of the symptoms were confusion, short-term memory loss, inability to focus, migraine headaches, slow reaction type insomnia, brain fog, infertility, depression, and tremors. A result of this study and similar studies, all RF towers have been removed from fire halls in the United States. So it doesn't sound, it's beginning to sound not so innocuous as Freedom presented. Studies link cell tower radiation with illness of electro-hypersensitivity. My wife referred to this, or rapid aging syndrome, fatigue, sleep disturbance, feelings of discomfort, difficulty concentrating, depression, memory loss, visual disruptions, irritability, hearing disruptions, skin problems, and dizziness. And Dr. Havas pointed out in her presentation that radiation 200 meters from a cell tower is the same as that of a cellphone one inch away from your head. If you put four cellphones together and put a frying pan in front of those cellphones with an egg in it, in a short while, those four cellphones will cook your egg. So when you go on a camping trip, if you have four people with cellphones, you don't need to light a fire. And again, these towers are going 24 hours a day. They don't stop. They're never shut down. Similar studies in Spain and other European countries are 100% more cautious using 300 meters. There's another illness called HPA, or hypothalamic pituitary adrenal illness, related to RF toxicity. A study over six years with individuals 500 meters from a cell tower, the conclusion was that there were six different key hormones significantly had lower levels with symptoms very similar to EHS illness. That's the, the radiation sensitivity. So in conclusion of her presentation, she says, "There are many scientists appealing Canada's guidelines, but Health Canada is not doing their job. They don't seem to want to protect Canadians. They're not listening." She says, "Cell towers are not safe, especially at 150 meters, let alone 500." So in Freedom Mobile invitation that we all got in the mail, and today in their presentation, they say that these Health Canada safety guidelines are outlined in their Safety Code Document 6, and are among the most stringent in the world. Dr. Havas tells us, and remember, she is an expert witness, that Canada's health safety guidelines have some of the lowest standards in the developed world. I'm not sure if some of you people have the package that I'm reading from, but it shows up here. This is Canada, the US, and Australia. They're 100 times, their microwatts per centimeter squared is at 1,000. Israel and India are at 100, but India has just dropped theirs to 10. China, Lithuania, Russia, Italy, Poland, and Paris have 10. So divide 10 into 1,000, and it's a lot, a lot, a big difference in Canada. We go right down to Bulgaria, they have 1. So that's 1,000ths, 1,000ths the amount of radiation that, that Canada is allowing under Health Canada. So I think it's really misleading when Freedom comes to people's homes and they say, well, you know, we're really, you know, you're going to get better 911 and all this kind of stuff. They really don't tell them the downside and the risks that other studies, not industry-related studies, are coming up with. Just for the people behind me, this is the, the graph that compares, and this is at 1,000, this is at 100, this is 10. This is India and Israel. This is China and Russia and Poland and Lithuania. We get down to 1 in Bulgaria, and in Austria, it's .001 instead of 1,000. Actually, those have been reduced in the new Health Canada upgrade in 2015. They were changed from 1,000 to 500. So we can easily see that Health Canada's safety guidelines outlined in their Safety Code 6 documents are definitely not among the most stringent in the world, but some are the weakest in the world, and that's why residents like ourselves are needing to be here tonight to defend our rights to live in a healthy environment. Even at 500, the new limits, Health Canada's limits, were still 50 times less safe than Russia and China, India, Italy, Lithuania, and more than 200 times less safe than Luxembourg, Belgium, Ukraine, and Bulgaria. And Bulgaria is 500 times more safe. Should we feel safe as Canadians as these cell towers appear in our... Should we feel safe as Canadians as these cell towers appear in our neighborhood? You be the judge. Now, I think it is important to kind of look at, they referred to SUCC's communication antenna policy, but there's really not much in it. The main thing is to encourage the dialogue between applicants in the District of SUCC with respect to location, height, and output of communication antennae and their associated structures, so as to ensure that such structures fit with form and character of the surrounding area. This policy was developed in 2002, it's outdated, people need to do something about it. Back then, though, fewer people were aware of the potential risks of cell towers, and there weren't so many of them. And they were more concerned with the reduction of property values. Today, a lot of people are much, much more informed by independent research. Now, the applicant must consult, okay, so I'll kind of leave it there and suggest that as a community, as a municipality, we really should be putting this on our agenda to look at this and develop whatever we can. I know that it is a federal kind of jurisdiction, and our kind of hands are tied a little bit, but I think it's important to really look clearly at this situation. You know, if we look back at lead and tobacco and asbestos and all these things, there was a time when everybody thought these things were pretty cool. You know, we have asbestos all over our house and here and there and everywhere, and tobacco, the tobacco companies were, you know, were trying to sell us, you know, with advertisements about tobacco, and we had lead in our plumbing and all kinds of things, and people thought it was fine, but things have changed, and things are changing very rapidly with the understanding of the risk of these cellphone towers. Okay, so, "I believe that our community needs to review this policy considering what scientific studies have discovered in the last 15 years since this policy was created, and work to incorporating protective measures into our community plan with bylaws based not on precautionary, on the precautionary principle or the precautionary approach to risk management, which states that if an action or policy has a suspected risk of causing harm to the public or to the environment in the absence of scientific consensus, that the action or policy is not harmful. In other words, the burden of proof that it is not harmful falls on those taking the action." So, it's these companies that should come into our communities and show us that, I mean, truthfully, that these things are, you know, they should let us know what the risks are so we can decide with our intelligence, and not just give us, I mean, my poor neighbor, I went to visit him, and he's across the street, and gee, you know, he's relying on Health Canada's rules, and moreover, it's a pretty big carrot, $15,000 a year. You know, if you have any cognitive dissonance around having this on your property, $15,000 a year will take you and your wife to Hawaii and back 15 times, that's a hell of a lot of money. And why have they raised the money from $4,000 or $5,000 to 15? Because people are becoming more aware of the risks that are associated with these cell towers. And it's very difficult, you know, so I talked to my neighbor, I told him a little bit about Dr. Havas's report, and, and he, so he said, "Yeah, I have my children, they're gonna move in, I'm gonna build a duplex in front of my house, and my kids and family are gonna be here, I don't want anything that's gonna interfere with my grandchildren, make them sick." But I phoned him four days later, and I thought for sure he was gonna change his mind. But, you know, the thing about cognitive dissonance, we don't want that in our lives, you know. I was a psychologist, and I studied attitude change, and, you know, it's like the fulcrum. If you put $15,000 on one end, the amount of research and the amount you spend looking into the internet to see what's out there is much less than if they were doing it for nothing. So, anyways. So, let's look at Health, the Industry Canada. It's the watchdog here, not Health Canada, not our municipality, and it should be clear to all of us that industry supports industry, not citizens and not communities. I mean, yes, we need industry, we, you know, it's always a balance in federally and provincially and municipality. We want jobs for sure, but we have to do it, we have to find jobs that don't put our health at risk. So, let's look at some studies. "Cellphone Tower Health Effects." This is from the National Environment Society in New Zealand. Eight studies referenced from the World Health Organization. There's one in France, and they're referenced here. "530 people living near mobile phone mass reported more symptoms of headaches, sleep disturbance, discomfort, irritability, depression, memory loss, concentration problems the closer they lived to the mass." In Spain, statistically significant positive exposure response associations between field intensity and fatigue, irritability, headaches, nausea, loss of appetite, sleeping disorder, depressive tendency, feeling of discomfort, difficulty in concentration, loss of memory, visual disorder, dizziness, and cardiovascular problems. The two different exposure groups also showed an increase of declared severity in the group with higher exposure. Okay. "Residents close to the mobile phone mass reported," this is in Poland, and the reference is cited, "reported more incidence of circulatory problems, sleep disturbance, irritability, depression, blurred vision, concentration difficulties the nearer they lived to the mass." In Israel, "A fourfold increase in the incidence of cancer among residents living within 300-meter residence of a mobile phone mass for between three and seven years was detected." In Germany, "A threefold increase in the incidence of malignant tumors was found after five years exposure in people living within a 400 radius of mobile phone mass." In Austria, "Significant correlation between measured power density and headaches, fatigue, difficulty in concentration in 365 subjects." In Egypt, "Residents living beneath and opposite along established mobile phone mass reported significantly higher occurrences of headaches, memory changes, dizziness, tremors, depressive symptoms, and sleep disturbance than a controlled group." We're getting, this is the last one of this study, of this. "Austria: All subjects reported various symptoms during exposure including buzzing in the head, heart palpitations, unwellness, lightheadedness, anxiety, breathlessness, respiratory problems, nervousness, agitation, headaches, tinnitus, heat sensation, and depression." So, there's a few more here, from the Center of Health and Environmental Justice in the US. "Europeans Union's EMS Reflex Research Project showing that mobile phone radiation damages DNAs in human cells." "In January 2005, the UK National Radiation Protection Board issued a warning that no children under the age of eight should use a cellphone citing the growing scientific evidence that exposure to RF poses a health risk." "The report also cautions about health risks of exposure to cellphone antennas referred to as base stations, and quotes, 'There remain particular concerns in the UK about the impact of base stations on health, including well-being.'" "The Irish Doctors Environmental Association statement urging, in quotes, 'The strictest possible safety regulations be established for the installation of masks and transmitters and for the acceptable levels of potential exposure of individuals to electromagnetic radiation.'" "The Internal Commission of Electromagnetic Safety," this is in Spain, "Adverse effects from occupational and public exposures to electric, magnetic, and electromagnetic fields and cellphone towers at current exposure levels." Signed by 31 leading scientists from around the world, "This resolution calls for governments to adopt guidelines for public and occupational electromagnetic frequency exposure that reflect the precautionary principle." The longtime president of Microsoft Canada, Frank Clegg, many, some of you know of him. That's a pretty prestige, position to have in the IT world. He's now our country's leading advocate for wireless radiation safety, and he's CEO of the new nonprofit organization, Canadians for Safe Technology, C4ST. This speaks volumes. This is an email I received, maybe some of your counselors know that there's been a raging problem on Triangle Mountain for at least 16 years with all the cell towers and masks. And, so I got an email from one of the ladies there. I was doing some research, and I saw that her name was involved in something, and so I phoned her, and she called back this morning, and she cited, she sent me an email, and she said, "June 25, 2008," this is how long it's been going on, "Name Position Withheld, conducted a survey of her neighborhood, the name withheld, discovered that the electromagnetic radiation coming from FM towers on Triangle Mountain reached an extremely high level. How long they had been at this level, we can only guess because no monitoring has been done by Industry Canada." So, Industry Canada is supposed to be responsible, you know, they're the ones that kind of okay all these things, but they're not really following up. It says, she said, "It's not enough to be a gas at the loose EMR standards that Canada has in relation to the, much of the civilized world, so we saw that chart and how low we, how high we are at the inept and quite possibly collusive testing that was done here in 201 by Industry Canada that yield a suspicious 114 microwatts per square centimeter. But when so-and-so tests at our home, his instrument yielded 455 microwatts per square centimeter. So, it appears to us that Health Canada and Industry Canada are out of control. The cavular attitude at these two departments about the danger they put us in, as well as the rest of the residents of Triangle Mountain, is positively incomprehensible." And she says here, in the end of her email, she says, "Wayne, this should be given to the people considering leasing their land. $15,000 a year sounds like a lot, but it won't pay for the lawsuits that are beginning to take place. They will be signed into a 20-year contract," I don't think she's right, I think it's five years with no protection. Do the owners that live on the land, do they know about this? Do they know they will suffer health problems? So, what telecom industry doesn't tell you, but tells its investors? This is, I think, some of the most significant evidence that we should consider before we allow these cellphones to come in. You know, these companies, they promote their products, and I think, you know, it's kind of common sense that they want to show their best foot forward and all that kind of stuff. But, these telecom, if you look at the other side of the coin, the people that invest in these telecom companies, these people get a very different message than the message they're giving us. And this is the kind of message that they get. This is a message from Verizon to their shareholders, in quotes, "Our wireless business also faces personal injury and consumer-class action lawsuits related to the alleged health effects of wireless phones or radio frequency transmitters, and class-action lawsuits that challenging marketing practices." So, that's what I'm referring to, marketing practices. They come, they, you know, they tell you that, you know, everybody's got one, "Look how many there are in our neighborhood." Telus must have over 25 of these things, so they're smaller, they're not huge towers, but they're all over our neighborhood. So, when they come to promote it, they give us, like, all the perks, but they don't give us the other side of the coin. So, but when we look at the communication that their, these companies give their shareholders, we get a completely different picture. Says, "Our wireless business also faces personal injury and consumer-class action lawsuits related to alleged health effects of wireless phones or radio frequency transmitters and class-action lawsuits that challenging marketing practices and disclosures relating to alleged adverse health effects of handheld wireless phones. We may incur significant expenses in defending these lawsuits. In addition, we may be required to pay significant awards or settlements." So, the companies themselves know the risks that they're putting us under, and they're telling their shareholders they could see a significant drop in share prices. This goes on and on and on, I'm sorry. AT&amp;T, "Unfavorable litigation or government investigation results could require us to pay significant amounts. As we deploy newer technologies, especially in the wireless area, we also face current and potential litigation relating to alleged adverse health effects on customers or employees who use such technologies, including, for example, wireless handsets." We may, so BlackBerry, and this is just part of it, "There can be no assurance that future studies, irrespective of their scientific basis, will not suggest a link between electromagnetic fields from mobile devices and adverse health effects." The American Tower Corporation, "Our costs, in quotes, could increase and our revenues could decrease due to perceived health risks from radio emissions, especially if the perceived risks are substantiated. If a scientific study or court decision resulted in the finding that radio frequency emissions pose health risks to consumers, it could negatively impact the market for wireless services as well as our tenants, which could materially and adversely affect our business, results of operations, or financial condition. We do not maintain any significant insurance with respect to these matters." Matter of fact, insurance companies won't insure against RF frequency radiation. And these guys are not insured. And so, the people, the only people that are gonna get sued are the people that have these towers on their property. Everybody else is exempt because of Industry Canada set these exemptions. So, Telefonica, "The adoption of new measures by governments or administrators or other regulatory interventions in this respect, and any future assessment on the adverse impact of electromagnetic fields in health may negatively affect the business, financial conditions, results of operations, and cash flows at our group." American Mobile, "Concerns about health risks relating to the use of wireless handsets and base stations may adversely affect our business. Portable communication devices have been alleged to pose health risks, including cancer, due to radio frequency emissions. Research and studies are ongoing, and there can be no assurance that further research and studies will not demonstrate a link between radio frequency emissions and health concerns. Any negative findings in these studies could adversely affect the use of wireless technology and as a result, our future financial performance." Okay, one more, or two more, sorry, or three. Allegations, this is T-Mobile, US. "Allegations have been made that the use of wireless handsets and wireless transmission equipment such as cell towers may be linked to various health concerns, including cancer and brain tumors." This is the company itself. You know, it's pretty hard, like, if Freedom Mobile came with what I've been saying to all these customers, I don't think $15,000's gonna do it. You know, I think they need a little bit more than that if they're gonna risk these things that their companies really know all about. And it's the same like the tobacco company, they knew what they were doing, and they still do. They're injuring our health. "So, lawsuits have been filed against manufacturers and carriers in the industry claiming damages for alleged health problems arising from the use of wireless handsets. There have been also other allegations regarding wireless technology, including that handset emissions may interfere with various electronic medical devices like hearing aids and pacemakers. You shouldn't live near these things if you have any heart things in your body, for sure." Nokia, "We have been involved in several lawsuits alleging adverse health effects associated with our products, including those caused by electromagnetic fields, and the outcome of such procedures is difficult to predict, including the potential significant fines or settlements. Even a perceived risk of adverse health effects, a mobile device or base stations could have material adverse effect on us through the reduction in the ban for mobile services, having adverse effect, for instance, through decreased demand, et cetera, et cetera." And Nokia, with, along with handset, other handset manufacturers and networks operating, is defended in 19 lawsuits in the Superior Court of the District of Columbia by individual plaintiffs who allege the radio emissions from cellular handsets caused their brain tumors and other adverse health effects. Okay, well, there's some, it does go on and on. "Thermal effects of cellular antennas which act as close-range, essentially as open microwave ovens can," ovens can," this is ABN Best Company, this is what they're saying, it's to their shareholders, "which act at close range essentially as open microwave ovens can include eye damage, sterility, and cognitive impairments. While workers of cellular companies are well-trained on potential dangers, other workers exposed to the antennas are often unaware of the health risks. The continued exponential growth of cellular towers will significantly increase exposure to these workers and others coming into close contact with the energy, high-energy cellphone antenna radiation." Okay, so sort of getting to the end here. Now, one of the things that I read time and time again in more liberal countries, countries that are more concerned and more of a democracy, that they're actually concerned not only in industry, but in the people that industry affects, the citizens of Canada, they use the precautionary principle. And it says, "The precautionary principle applies that there is a social responsibility to protect the public from exposure to harm when scientific investigation has found a plausible risk." Well, we know that the World Health Organization classifies these cell towers and this radiation as 2B carcinogen, and it's moving forward, for sure. "In some legal systems, as in the law of the European Union, the application of the precautionary principle is made a mandatory statutory requirement in some areas of the law, especially concerning these microwave radiations." So there was a good article in the Toronto Star on cell towers. It says, "Cell towers are unwelcome neighbors, and this is our challenge as a community. All across the country, cellphone towers have become the neighbor nobody wants, but under federal, current federal policy, there's almost no way to stop them from moving in. Local governments have long been frustrated," and this is what they're finding, found out in Colwood, "for fifteen years they've been trying to fight Industry Canada with very little effect." And you talk to any of those people about all the problems they're having with pets, with birds, with, with their loved ones, it's enormous. "So local governments have been long frustrated that they have almost no say in where a cellphone tower can go or not go." So once they put these cellphone towers on your property and they get the okay to do it from the community, they can go back and change these things without applying again. They can do a lot of things differently than what they first do. So, "Since approvals fall under the jurisdiction of Industry Canada, in cases where a tower is less than fifteen meters high or new antennas are added to an existing tower, according to federal regulations, municipalities and residents don't have to be told at all. Fed up, councils have started to push back, and residents who wake up one morning to find a tower beaming down at them are launching grassroots campaigns spurred by a nagging feeling that living next to a cell tower emitting radio frequency electromagnetic energy all day long, even at low levels, might not be good for the human body." I do have a lot of other stuff, but I think I've probably had my fair go at the kick at the can here. I'll leave the rest of the material with you to go through. Yeah, I think, just kind of got to the tip of the iceberg. Children are much more at risk than adults. Their skulls are smaller and thinner and the radiation absorption increases. The rate of cell division increases, more susceptible to genetic, genetic damage, mild enchiess, not developed electrical brain wave activity. Fetuses in mothers, radio frequency can pass placenta barrier and the brain barrier for, as well, and continuously react with a developing embryo and increasing cells. This talks about the risk to patients carrying pacemakers, implantable cardiovascular defibrillators, impulse generators, occupational hazard, effect on farm animals, vanishing bees. A study in England showed that bees refuse to return to their beehives where there was a cordless phone station. It was, it is discussed that the extensive use of mobile phones may be one reason why bee colonies are vanishing at a huge scale in Europe and the U.S. and Canada. Same with butterflies, insects, birds, spores. So in conclusion, we need to base, each country should develop each community, a health-based precautionary guideline to protect their families and themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. And just for your information, we have all been given your package, so all the councillors have it. And we'll see that it is forwarded on to the representatives from Freedom Mobile. And as we stated at the very beginning, our job here is to facilitate and listen to all the comments from the public, so we'll make sure that they receive it as well.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Is there anybody else that would like to come to the microphone with respects to 2614 Otter Point Road?
Can I ask a question right now? I'm from the other.
So I just need you to come to the microphone, but the one on Suk Road is coming right up next.
Well, I'm just wondering if we can just combine all the comments.
Unfortunately, the way we have it set out in our agenda, we have to procedurally follow it. I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure it all runs together. So what we'll do, if there's nobody else that wants to speak to the Otter Point Run, procedurally, we'll just move on to the next one on Suk Road. Thank you, sir. So is there anybody else that would like to come forward with respects to 2614 Otter Point Road? Okay. Seeing, seeing, sorry, sir. Excuse me, everybody. We really want to give everybody the opportunity to talk, but we need to do it in a respectful manner and one at a time and at the microphone, please. Sir, is this about 2614 Otter Point?
Yeah.
Okay, please have a seat and state your name for us.
Well, my name's Trevor Kremmerink and I've lived across the street from there for, since 2000. And I don't know, you guys want a cell tower in your backyard? Like, hear what Wayne was just talking about? All this stuff? I mean, I don't make a lot of money. It's all I can afford to retire in this place. Now I want to move. You know, I don't want to do that. I mean, guys just want money, 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 money. Cell towers all over the frickin' place. This, how many thousands of acres around here? Why do they have to be right downtown? You know, it's like, God.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak with respects to 2614 Otter Point? Okay, seeing none. We will. I'm seeing on the agenda that it says that the committee will provide recommendations to council to refer comments on to Freedom Mobile. I'm wondering if we can just go into the next one and take all public consultation? And then again, as I said at the very beginning, and I'll repeat myself again, sorry for belating it, it's our job to receive all the information and then it's our job to forward that on to Freedom in a, in a package and we'll be sure that that. Counsel Loggins.
I am okay with that, but I'm just wondering where the committee to consider recommendation piece would fit in? Is it for, are we going to do them separately or are we going to do them together at the end?
If it pleases counsel, I would like us to just do that at the end. Because really, you know, as a previous speaker spoke, it's all, it's all pertaining to the same and the information is going to the same place. So if that's okay with counsel, I think we could just couple our information and get it all together at the end. Any other comments from counsel? Counsel Pearson.
If the, the presentation has ended for the 2614 Otter Point Road, I'm going to have to declare a conflict before I hear the next section. So I will have to step out of the room.
Can I just, thank you, Counsel Pearson, just for one second. Because we have no governing jurisdiction whatsoever, does a conflict come into play when receiving public information? I'm just asking procedurally to our corporate officer.
Yes, that's a very good question. I was actually thinking that if Counselor Pearson would like to stay and if it is specific to the property itself rather than just general information, then he can maybe walk out at that time. I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll leave that. So procedurally, any conflict of interest is borne upon with the person itself. So I'll leave the comfortability with that and his choice up to Counselor Pearson. But again, as we don't, we don't have a governing position whatsoever, so I'll leave that on your shoulders as to what you wish to do.
I would feel it prudent that I would step out of the room based on the conflict, as I understand it. So I will, do you want me to declare publicly what my conflict is?
I don't, you don't have to. You can just state. No, excuse me, everybody. Sorry. Again, we're having this in a very respectful manner. If Counselor Pearson has a conflict, his due diligence is to state that there is a conflict and then he can remove himself. He is not obligated at all to state exactly what the conflict is. He's just removing himself from listening to information. So we're following procedures. So Counsel Pearson? Okay, so now we'll go into 5154 Suk Road. And again, this is Freedom Mobile Telecommunication Tower.
Good evening. Thanks very much for having us here. My name is Sean Ogilvy. I'm here from Forbes Brothers, but again, similar to the last presentation, I'm here on behalf of Freedom Mobile. It's fairly similar to the last presentation, so maybe we'll go through the first couple slides kind of quickly. Again, this is a Freedom Mobile site. It's another site in Suk. I can go through this. You heard about Freedom Mobile already, so we'll just keep going. Same wireless trends, same stuff, same network. So specifically for this site, they propose it at 5154 Suk Road. And the reason for this site is to fill a gap in between the town of Suk and heading east out of the town, back towards Victoria, Colwood, that area. And if you go ahead to the next slide, you can see, this is where they're trying to fill. So the green area is there around Suk and Suk Basin, and then the coverage drops along Suk Road and then starts to pick up again. So the proposed site, BVI 0063, which we're talking about here, would fill that gap in between there. So that's what it looks like with that site if it was in operation, and that's the gap it would fill. So as someone using the Freedom Mobile network traveled along that roadway, they wouldn't drop their call, they wouldn't be disconnected, it would work throughout. Again, it's this location, so it's fairly similar to what was discussed at the last. It's a different location, but again, the radio frequency engineers identified a location where they could fill the gaps, fits in with their network plan services area. This location specifically was chosen, although it is a rural residential area, the location were chosen where they thought it would best be screened. It's about 230 meters north of Suk Road. It's up in a fairly heavily treed area. It's also designed, it's a shrouded monopole, so the equipment is actually on the inside of the pole rather than mounted to the outside. Like the other tower, it'll also be painted a dark green to try and better blend in with the area. Let's see if this one. So this is just to give you an example. This is not the exact tower, it's just an example where you could see it. It's actually quite difficult to get a shot because from Suk Road, even driving by, it's very difficult to see up there. That other, and that other side is just a picture of the location. Similar to the other site, and the question that was raised earlier about sharing towers, the closest existing site to this proposal is Rogers Tower. It's about 4.5 kilometers northeast. As you saw from the coverage maps, this is too far away to reach that gap in their coverage. Additionally, I believe Freedom Mobile is actually going to be locating on this Rogers site as well to provide coverage to that area rather than have multiple towers. So they are using an existing tower, but it just doesn't reach this gap that we're Similar to the last one, consultation was undertaken for this. Notification was provided, this one because of the height, 45 meters. It's three times tower height, so it's a 135-meter notification radius, which I believe was actually done from the property boundary, not the tower location. Similar to the other site, we had four newspaper ads go out, Suk News Mirror and Suk Voice News. And so far, during the consultation process, we've seen a couple of phone calls and about five emails. Similar concerns to the last site, a lot of health concerns are raised. Decreased property values was a concern that was brought up, as well as the location and appearance. We'll just quickly run over these. I won't go too much into detail because a lot of this was brought up already. But Health Canada, those are the limits that are set. It's imposed by Industry Canada, we have to meet it. There are cities that have more restrictive limits, but even in Health Canada's own publications, they say there's no scientific evidence to have stricter limits, and so we follow the limits that they set. We've also actually had the Safety Code Six limits calculated for this site. They do that using a computer model. And at ground level at this site, it's calculated to be 0.1% of the allowable limit. So well below what Health Canada considers safe anyways. The, the other concern that was brought up was property values. It's another fairly common concern we get about these, about these towers. But really, the evidence we get is that sometimes it decreases where cell towers put in, sometimes it increases where cell towers put in, and sometimes there's very little change at all, which leaves basically to say that it's no more detrimental to effects on property value than any other amenity that would come, go along with a real estate transaction. The location, we did have some concerns about sightlines for this location. We feel it was the best location possible, given the constraints, to fill that gap in coverage. There's no existing tower, so we had to use a new tower site. But we were able to get a location that's up in the trees. We're shrouding the tower so that it's less obtrusive. And I mean, the whole point of this public consultation is we're open to hearing ideas and input from the community. If there's something we can do to make it better, then we will consider that. More of the same benefits, which we kind of went over, just affordable communication services from Freedom, 911 calls, stuff that went over with the last presentation, so we don't need to spend too much time on that. And what we're seeking ultimately is concurrence to build this tower. So if it hasn't been gone over really, it's kind of been mentioned, we're taking in all the public comments now, as you guys said, and that will be recommended to us. Industry Canada is the approval authority, but in order for us to move forward, we need the blessing generally of the local land use authority. So it's not the final approval authority, but we would be looking for a positive recommendation on this proposal. And that is pretty much it for this one.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments? No, sorry, just to council first, please, sir. I have one, and it is in respects to an email that we received from Mr. Saunders. I am, I'm assuming that he might be one of the ones that have contacted you with sightlines.
Yep.
In our package, he has a rendering from his front room window. Sorry, there it is.
Yep.
So I'm just wondering, have you guys given thought to this being his view?
We have. So initially, it was not considered that that would be the view. I would think we would have to take a closer look at that. From our review of the aerial photos, it does not seem that it would be that tall from that elevation above the trees right in the window. Obviously, I can't speak for his view. I don't live in his house, so I don't want to say that's wrong. But I think for that to be considered, we would need a professionally done simulation of what that tower would look like, given the accurate height from the ground elevation at the base of the tower. I spoke with Mr. Saunders briefly, and I think that was an estimate given on, his estimation of where the tower is going. That's not, it's not done by like a landscape architect or something like that.
Okay, so if I could just go one step further, would you be willing to work with Mr. Saunders so he doesn't have this view? So would you be, would your company, and I'm sort of putting you on the spot a little bit, but just for maybe comfort of other councillors at the table here, would you be willing to hire someone to make sure that this wasn't?
Well, I think the first thing we would do, and I would double-check this by assume, we send someone out, and what they'll do is they'll go to the actual tower location and they'll either fly one of those drones up to the height of the tower so you can see exactly where it'll be, and then they can put, they can simulate that tower into an actual photograph from a view. And so that's something we could probably work with Mr. Saunders on as well because we'd need access to his property also, but I'm sure we could sort that out.
Okay, thank you very much. Go back to council one more time. Any further questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you, sir. So now what we'll do is we'll open up for public comment at 5154 Suk Road. Anyone from the public, please come and state your name. Anyone from the public, please come and state your name?
Hello, council, I'm Stephen Saunders. I live at 5016 Glenslake Road, and it's my drawing you're looking at, and it was scaled off AutoCAD. It may be about 100 feet too far to your right when you're looking at it, but it's still dead in my view. The height, I was very conservative on it, it could possibly be higher. So I was going to talk for about half an hour on health hazards, but somebody beat me to it, so I don't think I'm going to do that anymore. Nah, I don't feel like bringing up the other 100 sheets. Anyway, just a couple of little things. Base stations typically transmit between 10 and 50 watts at several hundred megahertz to several gigahertz, depending upon the technology. The lower frequency, the more body penetration. Unlike cell phones, these base stations are transmitting continuously to the whole body. That was just a little backup for the previous speaker. Property value, it's insignificant compared with the health hazards, but I think it should be addressed. I have letters from two real estate agents here, which I consulted. One is Gunnar Stephansson. These are top real estate agents. I have attached a picture of my living room window, which is the picture Sean has and everybody else has. In my opinion, if that cell tower were cut to your living room view as it shows in your photo, it would seriously affect your property value and turn off a large number of buyers. Your view, your seclusion, and your property size are the things that make it very special. I live on 11 acres, we live on the hill right behind where this cell tower is going. And that's a very good likeness of what it's going to be from all of the windows across the front of my house. I have one other real estate agent, which is Philip Illingworth. A cell tower located where you indicated by your photo will have an adverse effect on the value of your home for several important reasons. When you purchased, you knew your view was protected because of the height restrictions on buildings on the property below. If the governing authority wishes to change the rules you purchased by, they need to compensate you for the loss of the view. Many people will not purchase a property near and especially in the sightline of a cell tower. While there is as much written about the harm caused or the harm not caused, there is not definite proof that the cells and the electromagnetic fields they generate do not harm humans in the long run. This will deter many potential buyers, as well as pose a possible risk to the current occupants. It is very hard to put a percent or dollar value on the negative effect of the proposed tower, but it would be significant. While the loss of a clear view and value of your property is great, I think it is a minor compared to the possible health risks you or your municipality authority could be exposing you to. So that's basically all I have to add. I just don't want to go through an hour of talking about health risks. All the same websites, I think, are on one of the letters I sent you, so if you want to go on them, you can. One other little item about the health costs is France has imposed a 100-meter barrier around all cell towers. You're not allowed to put a cell tower within 100 meters of a residential property anymore. And that is under review, they're thinking of increasing it to 200 or 300 meters. So there are significant health risks potentially involved in this. And if the companies are all protected, and the only person that you can sue is the property owner, he could be in a lot of trouble. And he's not here. Okay, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Anybody else that would like to speak to 5154 Suk Road?
Yes.
Just please come forward and state your name.
Marilyn Erickson. I'm at 5016, a tenant of Stephen Saunders, Glenslake Road. In 1989, my mother was diagnosed with cancer. She lived on Main Waring Road in Sanich, and there's a huge complex of cell towers at the end of the street. She did a rough study herself of residents on the street and found that five out of the nine or 10 homes had people with cancer in, and she passed away the following year. So we didn't ever have a conclusion or follow that up. But factual information from all over North America states all kinds of health risks. There's a school in New York, Upper New York, where they had a cellphone tower in close proximity. Six of the teachers and aides were affected with cancer, four of them died, six, no, five children had either leukemia or cancerous brain tumors, three of those died. So it's time that Health Canada studied this problem much closer than it did. In fact, even with our smart meters, BC Tel has, is still investigating and has claims outstanding, and those were removed from several places in California. So we know that our authorities aren't protecting us, they're protecting their interests. Some notes I made. Freedom Mobile only has 3.5% of the Canadian market, so I'm not sure why they are wanting to come to Suk. They are presently nowhere else on the island and have a very small nationwide profile. Call me skeptical, but I would think that they probably have a deal in place already with some other providers or BC Hydro. In their notes, they say that future plans could include more shrouding on the towers, and I assume that would be for other providers. Or an expansion, which also increases the radiation. So I would like to ask them if they have any deals in place if we're allowed to do that, because they must know. So that's one of my questions for them. They always, they already know that the standards, as has been pointed out here, Health Canada standards are the worst in the world with Australia and the US. If Bulgaria has, what did you say, 500 times the safety? Something needs to be done there. Why are we betting on our health risks in this community when you will be liable as a council, when landowners that put it on their site will be liable? As others pointed out, asbestos and lead are found to be harmful, and that's all in the courts now too, as well as tobacco waste. So Industry Canada doesn't care about you, it cares about industry. Right now, in the US, just like someone pointed out, they've removed cellphone towers from fire halls. They've also removed them and are in the process of doing that from water towers. Water towers were one of the places that they found first would get them up higher, cost less. That's proven to be a problem because the water is standing water, and the rays or waves go down. Probably Stephen can point it out better as an engineer. They don't go down to the base of the tower as much as they do around the surrounding area. And if that water has been affected, and it's proven it has been with, it's similar to water purification, I guess, it's being irradiated, so it's changing the water itself. How about us with our wells all around there? That's where we get our water, from a well that is in proximity to this tower. And I'm not comfortable with that as a tenant, so that's another thing I didn't know if you knew or had it been addressed. But I think that's worth investigating. I'd also wonder what the health claims for your, well, for all mobile providers are for their cell tower workers, people who work in close proximity to those. What are the WCB claims? Is there a greater risk to your workers working close, or is that something we have to investigate ourselves? Freedom Mobile is just marketing a product, just like Players and Rothmans used to do. I think thousands of others are infinitely qualified more than me, but I do not believe you have our best interests at heart, and you're not pursuing best practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Erickson.
Anna Saunders, 5016 Glenslake Road. I would like to mention a couple of things that come to my mind. One of the things is we rely on you as a council to represent us, to protect us as a community. And I know this is not quite a setup that, as a public consultation for this applicant, but I think it's very important to mention it in your presence, that we rely on you as our representatives to protect us as human beings, our health, and the health of this community. And I would like that to be mentioned in your report to this applicant. And you also have legal responsibility as our representatives to carry on to the best interests of the community. I'd like to really stress that out, because we feel at this particular moment quite helpless. It seems like we have no representation in this matter at all, legally or otherwise. We would have to pursue it in a private legal matter if things are not, they don't come, you know, as we would expect them. My property is quite a bit higher than the property mentioned in application, and so our view and our health will be first of all, and mostly affected by that tower. We're going to get the first blast from the damn thing. And there is a mention in the applicant's form that further plans to develop and add to are quite possible. We have no say in the matter, which means that the irradiation is going to increase by, let's say, 20, 40-fold, because we've seen those tires, and we see what happens a couple of years down the road where the additional units are added. Each one of them emits 40 watts of waves. This is not acceptable. I also would like to mention that locality of it is quite questionable. There is Mount Matheson, which could cover the entire Suk, East Suk, Suk Road, and so forth, if they're really concerned with the coverage. There is further property to the left of us, towards Victoria, which is completely uninhabited, nobody behind, nobody in front. Why does it have to be 200 meters in front of my property? They have not done their work, they, you can't rely on just satellite Google images. Look at the proper map where the heights are specified. You do not need drone. I can read a map, I don't think that they should be excused from reading a proper map with elevations. If they did look at it, they would know that it would affect everybody behind. So there's just not enough research done on their part, and I think the risk is absolutely not acceptable, the same as with our property. That's all I have to say, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. If I can go to Counsel Ray, please.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. I'm sorry, I missed your name?
Anna Saunders.
Oh, okay, so you're at the 5036. Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything to follow, Counsel Ray? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Hello. My name is Bevan Begalki. I'm a resident of 5016 Glenslake Road as well. I won't rehash the topics that others have dealt with and dealt with in a very comprehensive way, but I think I can add a couple of things. And it's kind of an odd process here, because I feel in a way it's a fait accompli that, you know, because it's a federal matter, they allow these companies to come in and just kind of do whatever they want, and boom, now we have to kind of sit back and take it. I really think that's terrible. You come in and you do your PowerPoint presentation, zooming through all of these things, it'll be shrouded, it'll be away from people.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir. Sorry, just how the process works is you need to address your comments to us, and then we then...
Okay.
So they're in the background listening, I'll assure you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'd like to talk about consultation, because I think you guys have done a very poor job of that. I live 200 meters away from the proposed tower, no one ever came to my house to talk to me about it. No one ever gave me any information. There's a, can I have the green pack up here? There's a big green pack up here. None of us who are most affected by it, none of us received these. Tell me how that's consultation? That's not consultation. You should be embarrassed. I was a teacher for 37 years, and we went through a process that took us two years where we investigated cellphone towers and cellphone use and wiring a school or not wiring a school, and changing over and keeping up with technology and so on. And some of my students could have done a better job than the cellphone company has done in respect to their presentations. Would you want a cellphone tower in your backyard? There are seven people living on the property around that tower, the proposed tower. There are people with health issues, there are young children under one year of age. We haven't been consulted, no one's come out to talk to us about any of this. That's just not right. The property values alone, that is, aside from the health issues that have been covered, it would decimate that area. It's just probably the worst area you could find. And you know why they're choosing that area? Because there's easy road access into it. They don't have to plow a new road in, they don't have to do any of that stuff. The road is there, they can zoom it in and have that tower up there in no time and start selling off other parts of the tower to other companies. You better, I'll bet you any money that will happen.
Sir, excuse me, sir, you'll have your turn next. Thank you, no, no. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, sir, 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 I have to interrupt you, and with all due respect, we have to do this procedurally, thank you, sir.
At any rate, the proposal for another point from your PowerPoint was how you're going to shroud it, and that it will be kind of put back into the trees. That's not the case at all. It'll stick out like a sore thumb, you're not disguising that at all. Let's not put it off into the trees and the large trees around it. That's completely incorrect. I really would hope that council explores this and makes some recommendations about putting this damn thing somewhere else, away from people. It's just not right to do that. And I sure hope you people do a better job of your presentation the next community you go on to.
Excuse me, sir, sorry to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else wishing to speak on 5154 Suk Road?
Can I just ask a quick question about the gap that the presentation pointed out?
Excuse me, sorry, can I just get you to come to the microphone, please, ma'am?
So in the PowerPoint presentation, Sean, I think his name was, said that there was a gap, that, and it was the best place to put this, in this gap, and it looked like that gap was pretty big to me. It looked like it went up behind Seventeen Mile Pub. I mean, I know for a fact on our eleven acres, there's nothing except mountains and hills, and there's nothing in there. There's even probably a fire road that goes in there they could use. So I'm curious about that gap, why it has to be so close to Glenslake Road and our property. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to come to the microphone and speak?
Just two seconds.
Yes, Mr. Saunders.
The cellphone reception in our house is excellent. We have Telus, Rogers, and everybody, so I don't know what their problem is.
Thank you.
And we're in behind the hills.
Thank you. Anybody else for 5154 Suk Road that has a comment they'd like to share our question? Come to the microphone, please, sir. And just state your name, please.
My name is James Duggan, and I'm living at Cottage as an air manor. And I just came up to ask because I was, I understood that there's, that we'd be talking about the cellphone tower that's proposed for going up on the Legion. Is that already talked about?
No, I'm sorry, sir. Just tonight we were looking at the one on Otter Point Road, and right now we're talking specifically to the one that's at 5154 Suk Road.
Okay. So while I'm up here, because I'm specifically interested in that one because I live beside it, but, but I would maybe contribute a few things while I'm here. And one of the things I, oh, well, first of all, I want to start off by saying that I started to research this because of the tower that's going up on the Legion. So I came across a YouTube video by, an interview of a man called Barry Trower, B-A-R-R-I-E-T-R-O-W-E-R. And he is probably in his seventies, and he's been in microwave technology since he joined the Royal Air Force as a young man, so fifty-seven years. And he's a whistleblower on microwave technology. And the name of the interview on YouTube, if you punch it in, it's Barry Trower Dash, The Dangers of Microwave Technology. And I really, you know, really wish that you would all at least take fifteen minutes of your time to take a look at the first fifteen minutes. It's a two-hour interview, and there's lots more interviews of him on YouTube. This man is the number-one expert that I've been able to find, like, on YouTube. He said, and this was in 2010, that the telecommunications industry is the biggest industry in the world. It's three trillion dollars, US dollars, per year, then. Now, anybody here know what three trillion, what a trillion is? Come on. Anybody? Anybody? A trillion, a trillion is one thousand billion. So that's three thousand billion dollars a year back in 2010. These people behind me are working for a small fry, they're a drop in the ocean. But they're being pushed by an industry that's this strong, and there's no way that you can go up against them unless, you know, we become very conscious about what we're doing, and we really pull together and figure out how to stop the microwaving of this community. Because, as various people have already said, it's probably the most dangerous thing that's happening on the planet. Number one, children in the schools, for example, and they're rolling in Wi-Fi, I don't know, maybe they've finished doing it, but they're trying to roll in 5G, which is a thousand times stronger than what it is now. In all the schools, like right here in Suk, all these children, like young girls, the eggs in their ovaries that are unformed as yet, but they're there, are being radiated by microwave. And microwave, of course, heats the water in the cells. That's why when you put something in a microwave oven, it doesn't heat the plate, it heats the water in the food, you know what I mean? So these children's eggs are being fried every day. Now, when they grow up and have children of their own, there's no telling whether they will be deformed or look normal, but you can be guaranteed that they will be defective because this Barry Trower, who's been doing this for fifty-seven years, and he really knows what he's talking about, he says there are eighty-three hundred government studies that show the dangers of microwave technology. They can even kill you if they want to. And these new phones, they have six, six antennas. They're going all over the place. He also said that, you know, talking about these people who gets, who will be brought to court eventually, you know, who own the property, et cetera, et cetera. Well, there's a thing called active denial, and what the countries, the governments in the countries that are being sued, they have a policy whereby they, the first, the first thing they come up with is, I can't remember the first one, it might come to me, but the second one is that, oh, yeah, the first one is that they say, well, first of all, I want to say that they have a fifth, a fifty-year policy where they won't come to the court except until fifty years is up. First thing they say is, everybody is dead, you know, fifty years later. Now, this is a three-trillion-dollar business that pay the courts, pay everybody to do this. They can put lawyers in, in four-wheel drives anywhere in the world and just send an army of top lawyers to fight their cases. So then the next thing, when that's thrown out of court, they say, well, memory is impaired. When that's thrown out of court, then they pull in, they bring in the, what is it called? Secrecy Act, the government secrecy, Top Secrecy Act, or whatever it's called. And that's it, you know, they have a fifty-year denial policy. Not, also, you know, it's not just here. By the way, you know, you put it in the trees, it starts killing the trees. This thing that's up on the wall here, rainforests meeting the sea, that's a joke, you know? The rainforests are being cut down. We see them going through the town every night, every day. The sea is being polluted by this very electromagnetic frequency that's being sent all over the world. This isn't just happening in Suk. The seas are dying. Like, we need to wake up, you know, or we will be all dead. And that's part of the plan. You just look up Agenda 21, 1993, the UN in Brazil had a meeting, and part of their, part of the, every government that went to the UN signed on this document at the end. And in the document it stated, "We want to bring down the population of the world to five hundred, to half a billion, half a billion people by 2050." This is a part of a slow plan, you know? The people who want to, who are running this world, you know, wanted, wanted all for themselves. Anyway, let's see what else I made, a few other notes here. So these people want their blessing. That's a joke. The two blocks that are about to go up, oh, yeah, there's a man here, a couple of weeks ago, I saw him here myself, and he's applying to knock down two houses just across the road from where I live, and put up two units with ten families in it, in each unit, right? Some of you know who I'm referring to. It's on Air Road. One of the houses is already down. And, you know, those people, those houses, those blocks are going right behind the Legion Hall. It's a joke. They don't know what they're walking into. And the children across the road, of course, in the daycare center, they're getting, they will get fried good time. Plus, they're already getting fried from the microcell across the road on Grant, which is just behind the daycare center. And the owner of the daycare center is not a local landlord, as far as I know. I'm not sure about this, but I think she is in Mitchelton. And the people who, the man who owns the block in front of this, the Legion, he lives in Sydney. He's an absentee landlord. So, you know, I said to Dave Evans, you know, the guy who owns the stick, do you know about, did you get a letter? No, he says, I'm not the landlord.
Excuse me, Mr. Duggan, Mr. Duggan, I just want to bring you back to that. We're talking to 5154 Suk Road.
Yeah, I know, well, I'm just talking about cellphone towers, so pardon me if I digress a little bit. Anyway, China, Russia, Switzerland, many other countries have actually thrown Wi-Fi out of schools. Do you know why? Because these countries, especially Russia and China, they don't want their kids growing up idiots, deformed. They know. These people, you know, in Moscow during the, during the, during the Cold War, the Moscow, it's a famous case, Moscow Embassy, or the American Embassy in Russia was, what do you call it? They were zooming microwave frequency at the whole staff in the American Embassy, and every one of them came down with cancer. The children got leukemia, the women got some other kind of cancer, and the men got other kinds of cancers, I don't remember the details. And within eighteen months, the whole staff was changed, and they put in a new staff, and within eighteen months, they were all changed. And finally, the Americans figured out what was going on, and instead of saying, my goodness, that's, that's a shame, they started developing themselves. The Russians are way ahead of America. So I'm telling you, you know, you're playing with fire here. We've been doing it. Like, my daughter just had a baby a month ago in Vancouver. She's been using a cellphone since, I don't know, when she was, I don't know, twenty? Nineteen? Eighteen? I don't, I don't, I wasn't around at the time, which I'm very sorry about, but anyway. Now, her child, you know, because her husband is a location scout, and their condo in Mount Pleasant is small, and he runs his business outside, you know, within, like, within the confines of the condominium that they live in. And, you know, it worries me, I don't know what to do. I don't know, I'm not, I don't know how to actually approach this because the baby has come out, not deformed, very nice little baby, one month old, and she sent me photographs today with the baby lying on a bed, taking, taking the photographs with her cellphone, you know? And what I know about cellphones from my research now, this is deadly. It's been, it's been proven that these things are teratogenic. A teratogen is an agent that can disturb the development of the embryo or fetus. They can halt the pregnancy or produce a congenital malformation. Classes of teratogens include irradiation, maternal infections, chemicals, and drugs. The governments in some countries are not being responsible, is my opinion. Telecommunications companies are not being responsible, that's my opinion also. I say it's my opinion because I can legally protect myself by saying it that way. Parents need to be responsible. And like this lady behind me was saying, our leaders need to be responsible. Like, leaders are people who have a vision, who can see further ahead than the flock. They're supposed to be taking care of the people. Now, why would we need leaders if they're not able to see ahead and protect everybody? I think you should remember that because you are, you know, you're implied as leaders in your own various aspects, you know? I, I was wondering, why is the mayor not here?
Mr. Duggan, if I can get your comments pertaining to 5154 Suk Road.
Well, no, I mean, is she sick, or why is she not here?
She couldn't be here this evening.
Okay, well, I gave a presentation on water, and she was so sick she had to leave. One of the things I know from Barry Trower is that the first thing that microcell waves does is it, it destroys your, well, let's say it compromises your immune system, it attacks the immune system first. You get more colds, and then you get longer colds, and that's what happened last year with some of the people in this room, or not even the people in this room. I witnessed it myself. There's a pattern that's already been discovered in medical science of how it affects the human body. I have them down here, but I'm not going to try and look for them. But I'm going to stop now, but I'll tell you, if we don't stop the Wi-Fi getting rolled out, if we don't get the Wi-Fi out of the, out of the schools, all they've got to do is drill holes in the wall and put in, you know, hardwired, that's all, you know? It's not, it's not a problem. We don't, we don't have to worry about the money. We need to be worried about the children, you know, the future of this country, the future of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for, for listening.
Would anybody else like to come forward and speak to 5154 Suk Road? Thank you, just please state your name, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, could you just push the button on the microphone in front of you? No, it's on this, on, same as mine, on this, on the microphone itself?
Okay.
Thank you, and then your name again, please, sir.
Mike Hurley, and I'm representing my mom, who owns the property at 5008 Glenslake Road, and also my brother, who owns the next piece of property up, I believe it's 5010 Glenslake Road. We've heard all the health discussion and lowering of property values, so all I want to say is for our family and my brother's families, we're totally opposed to this. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak to 5154 Suk Road?
Hi. My name's Maureen Sims, and I live at 5162 Suk Road. For all the reasons that have been stated by my neighbors, I'm totally opposed to the cell tower going in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Any other speakers like to come forward? I'll give one last call, anybody else like to come forward for 5154 Suk Roads? Okay, thank you. So now, we will come back to council. Oh, sorry, I just pushed the wrong button. Do any councillors have any further comments or question after listening to our comments from the public? Councillor Casper?
Um, I don't expect an answer from all the people who made presentations. I'm just going to throw a suggestion, if, if they have additional concerns, they may want to contact their Member of Parliament, as this is a federal jurisdiction. I didn't see his name copied on any of the correspondence. So I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion. That's been done in, in previous instances where these matters had come forward to council, I think as far back as 2012 and 2013. I would also just like to pass on that, that our municipality is in a difficult position. I know that comments and people have advocated that, that we should, you know, do more, but our, our hands are legally tied on a federal matter, and our zoning bylaws, and, and the policies, policies that we have in place have been based on the whole issue of federal compliance and provincial compliance on matters that they have full control over. As Acting Mayor Berger has said, that our role is pretty important in that we make sure that all the information that's presented here publicly and in writing is conveyed to the proper authorities, including the applicant. And it's, and in my view, it's always been our hope that those people will in fact listen to what everybody has to say and, and act accordingly. Now, you know, I can't force people to do things, and I'm sure you feel the same way too. But, you know, our job is to make sure that the most correct or the most current information that's been brought forward is in fact presented to the powers that be. And I think we got an indication on some mitigating or possible mitigating circumstances relating to sightlines. But I, I'm not an expert, and I can't speak to any other matters that relate to health or otherwise. And I know, I don't want to pretend that I can do that, because I honestly can't. And so I just wanted to pass those comments on. And, you know, it's not an easy task for us to deal with the concerns when we really have no control. And it's frustrating, not only from our side, but also from, I think, the public side, as what was noted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Casper. Councillor Loggins, please.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone in the public who voiced their concerns tonight, and also to the presenters for bringing forward the information. One point of clarity in regards to the to-be carcinogen, that was actually not the World Health Organisation that made that statement, but the Agency for Research on Cancer. And in 2013, the World Health Organisation noted that cellphones emit more than a thousand times higher, what am I trying to say? RF radiation than the base stations, and that there is no indication of, of that actually being a possible carcinogen. So they didn't actually agree with the Agency for, for Research on Cancer, unfortunately. Having said that, I have heard from the community for several years about electrosensitivity, and how they, how many residents do move here specifically to get away from the pains that they suffer every day in more, in city environments. So if we continue to, to allow the cell towers to come into our area, then we're pushing peoples not only out of their communities, but also further away from their jobs and their families. I have to disagree with Councillor Casper. Our hands are not tied. We do have the option to choose non-concurrents, and that's what I would support here today for both sites. Specifically, I would suggest that council supports non-concurrents for 5154 Suk Road for a few more specific reasons that I could kind of wrap my head around. The other one is more of a personal choice, and for me representing the people who do have issues with it as well. But the one on Suk Road specifically, there is already coverage in this area. I've made a 911 call from that driveway recently. There is a major impact on the neighbour's property value, and it's outside of our growth area and rural as well. So I don't see how it actually would, would help what we're trying to do to further the development of our, of our core, either, or really that, that area, since it is already serviced. The only two other things, actually, no, I'll leave that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Loggins. Anybody else on council? Councillor Parkinson?
Through your worship, I, after listening to the public speak on all their concerns, and what my two counterparts here have said, I would like to see us put forward a, a letter stating that we would like the groups to work together. I do not believe that someone's property should be devalued because there is a cellphone tower going on their property. That's one of my concerns. I don't believe that people should have it put right in front of them either. And I think as a council that we should put forward our motions or our desire not to see this happening in our town.
Thank you, Councillor Parkinson. Everyone, if I can just, thank you. Sorry, sorry, I've seen your hand pop up, but we've already done the public input part, so now this is for council, just to throw back their comments. Councillor Ray?
Thank you, your worship. And I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I know it's a very personal matter when you're talking about having a cellphone in your backyard. One of the things that I also have to be mindful is that there are a lot of complaints out in the community about the lack of cellphone coverage. And people are starting to come to depend on cellphones as their main means of communication. There are no, you know, landlines are down below thirty percent. So these are sort of the things that we have to take into account. And I do agree with Councillor Parkinson that perhaps there is a way to work together to make sure that if the cellphone towers need to go, that they, that we look at those places where, you know, we heard from you that you'll take a look at this, because it does give me some concern. And there was also another document here that I found interesting. Mr. Saunders, not Mr. Saunders, I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly provided us with a lot of cellphone towers already within our community. And, you know, one of the things is, is do we just take care of the downtown in terms of having access to proper coverage? Or do we make sure that all of our community has coverage? And if we do go the latter way, then how do we do it best to protect the interests of those who are immediately impacted by having a tower in their area? So I'm, I'm, I'm still, you know, I, I thank you for the information. And I'm, I'm not prepared to make any decision this evening, and this is a committee of the whole, so it's about receiving information.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson.
Yes, thank you, and I think that in a general sense, and I'll comment on, on the cellphones themselves, and my, sort of, I had some opportunity to think was in the back room. I think that we need to, as a, as a community, ask, we, we need to ask some, some questions, some pointed questions to, to other levels of government around, you know, what are, what are, you know, we hear that they're safe, and then we hear that they're not safe, and, and, you know, there's conflicting information that we've even received tonight. But I think that this issue can't be unique to just Suk. It's, you know, it's got to be right across the country. And I think that there's governing bodies like FCM and, and agencies like that that have to start raising these questions, because if there's a health concern, then, then we need to understand it, or we need to explore it. There's some, you know, there's some more tactical, on-the-ground things, like, like, you know, view lines, property values, and all of those things, that I think that fall within our purview to discuss at the local level. But again, there's a bigger picture out here. So I'm kind of thinking for myself personally, I would like to be asking some more questions to different levels of government around the safety. I mean, you know, you, you get a report in front of you that says that it's unsafe, and then you have a report that, on the same day, that says that it is safe. So I think there's, there's, there's a bigger picture from bigger other levels of government that need to be addressed. Because it's, it's coming at us so fast, and the world's changing with these communication things. It's bringing problems that, you know, ten years ago, our policy wasn't, wasn't adequate. And fifteen years ago, we're, we're, how many people didn't have cellphones? And now it's the other way around, how many people live without them? I mean, it's, it's, it's a fact of life, that communication is, is fast. So anyways, I think there's more questions to be asked, so. I'll stay away from very specific questions around the second piece of property.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson. Any other further, Councillor Casper?
I just have a question of staff, and it relates to the timelines in regard to when the, the applicant started the process. So it's a thirty-day process, and then there's, I, I read in here twenty-one days or something. So at what stage is this application at, as far as those timelines are concerned?
Your worship, through to Councillor Casper, if you give me a minute, I, I just read it, I got to find it again. Okay. Oh, your worship, I just found it. Industry Canada's process indicates that the local governments are normally expected to conclude the consultation process within the hundred and twenty days from the receipt of the formal consultation request. So that gives you an indication of where we are right now. I believe the application came in on, you give me a minute. I, I, your worship, through to Councillor Casper, I believe it was mid-April when we received it.
Ms. Rurs?
Thank you. So the applications came in on April sixth and twelfth?
Thank you.
So, so we're about sixty days into it? Is that what it is, right now, just over two months? So does that mean there's another two months, or less than two months, correct?
That's correct, it was a hundred and twenty days was the expected process turnaround time.
So, and just, you know, it, it might be good for our current staff and the newer members of council who weren't here when we went through a more extensive application in the town centre. But we did get quite a bit of additional information that may not be part of this package that dealt with Industry Canada issues that may not have been included here. I know there were a number of lengthy discussions about that application. So I, I just wonder if there's anything possibly missing? And if staff could go to that application, it, it might give us some additional guidance, or at least council when it receives this report.
Thank you, Councillor Casper. Just to add to that, so I just have a few things, sorry, I wrote lots of pages of notes of all of your comments, so I just want to, forgive me while I fumble through them. To add to that, Councillor Casper, I, I do agree, I think it would be great to revisit what transpired during our last council, because we had an excellent conversation, similar to this tonight, an excellent conversation around cellphone towers and uses. So my own personal comments are, there's still some unanswered questions for me. I think, because we're in a unique situation, so we've learnt that federally, this is regulated and mandated. Us as a council, our job is to receive information and then give a statement saying, yes, we agree, yes, we don't agree. Having said that, that statement doesn't carry a ton of weight, but it is what it is. So for myself, I'm not comfortable giving any sort of statement pro or against right now, just because I have outstanding questions. Having said that, because we're meeting tonight as committee of the whole, so for all of you in the audience, a committee of the whole can't make any, any decisions. So what will we be doing if we decided to go, and I'll leave it up to the table, if we decided to make a statement either pro or against? What that statement does, well, then it will flow to our next regular council meeting, and then we'll be sitting as a council, and we'll discuss whether or not we submit a letter saying yes of concurrence or non-concurrents. So because we have that timeline in between, I would like to have some, for my own self, I would like to have some things answered. I would like to know whether Freedom Mobile would entertain a different location at 51, than 5154. Looking at the rendering that we were given with a cellphone tower in the middle of a person's living room doesn't sit well with me. So for myself, I would like to know where's the flexibility on what that poll would look like with respects to that, to that land. There was also an email that we received within our package from a resident, and that this, I, this comment wasn't brought up tonight, and it was all around camouflage. And so she sent us a picture of, this is an actual cellphone tower, and it's made to look like a pine tree. And so in the little bit of Googling that I did before coming to this meeting, there's actually quite, quite a few different camouflage varieties. You can have a palm tree, evergreen, or what have you. So another, that, it just was another comment that was brought by another resident saying, if we're going to paint it green, why not go one step further? If it's going to be in the trees, make it look like a tree. So my, excuse me, everybody, everybody, sorry. Thank you very much, you guys all had your opportunity to talk. I am relaying a message from another resident. So we're going to be respectful of all of your comments, and now we're being respectful of the comments that we've also received tonight. So please, if we could just be respectful, that would be fantastic. So in addressing the concern by this resident, it's another option. Would they be willing to spend the extra money to do that? Another unanswered question for me. As far as health and safety concerns, there is an enormous amount of things. And again, it seems a little hypocritical that when I wanted to learn about this topic, I had to go to a computer to learn about it. So I needed coverage to get to that computer. So I did find myself in a perplexed situation today, because all of my research came from cell coverage. And again, sorry, ma'am, I just, we need to be respectful. We sat and listened to you talk, now it's time for us to just debate our feelings and thoughts. So basing off what other people said, there are other things that I would like some answers from, possibly from the applicant, whether they'd be willing to move it so it's not in a sightline, whether they are interested in what another community member did bring up, as far as camouflage, and so on. As far as what our responsibility going forward is, and what this council can do, what I think would be fantastic at our next council meeting would be for us to discuss, discuss what Councillor Pearson brought up. We all attend the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. Most people at this table have attended it once or twice. That's where federal regulation can be challenged. So it would be fantastic for us as a council to look at maybe putting a motion forward to the FCM talking about regulation, and why local governments can't have more of a say when it comes to really important land use, things within their own municipality. So that's another thing that I would love to see us talk about. I think Councillor Casper brought up an excellent idea with contacting your MP, and I would encourage everybody to, because he is our federal representative. Yeah, so going forward, I'm not sure what the wish of the table is. I know for myself, unfortunately, I want some time to get some answers from the applicant, and I think that that can happen before the next council meeting. Councillor Loggins?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to clarify that at our regular, next regular council meeting, we would be, am I right, that we'd be voting on pro or con, because we're in that timeline? Okay. And I completely agree that it would be something that, that we can look into taking to our various municipal conferences. various municipal conferences and, and that it is important for everyone here to contact your MP. However, that does nothing for the people that are here today. And there are a lot of people who are also not in this room who will be very negatively affected by, by this. So my concern is with this current proposal and how that affects the people immediately. And I don't see any bonuses for our community. The areas are already serviced by cell phones. The neighbors have confirmed that themselves. And aside from that, I, I'm not sure why this is a good thing for Sook. And we've just heard way too many cons. So I definitely won't be supporting it at the regular council meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Loggins. Any other comments from councillors? So what would be the wish of this council table? Councilor Casper?
Well, I think we should put it back to Freedom Mobile that they've heard a number of concerns that have been raised. And my suggestion is that we have them direct responses to those concerns raised to our staff and that should be included in, in the package that council would be deliberated on. I think that's a start. There's also, you know, all this information that we've been given should be at least compiled in a report to go to council. And, you know, perhaps that information from previous discussions on these matters in 2012 and 13, I think it was, might be relevant. So I don't know if that's my motion. I don't know if that's a good motion or not, but I'm throwing that out as a suggestion.
So, sorry, just to summarize, you'd like to make a motion to direct staff at the next regular council meeting to bring back questions outlaid by the comments here as well as compile a package of the comments we've received thus far to forward on to?
I was hoping that, I was hoping that the people from Freedom Mobile could, could at least give our staff a response through to us of the comments that were raised tonight. You know, I think that's an important step.
Councilor Ray?
Yes, Your Worship. I'm just mindful that the next regular council meeting is Monday and I'm just not sure that that would really give anybody an opportunity to put together a package. That's being requested. I certainly support the, the package, but I would suggest to go to the July meeting.
Councilor Pearson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, it's along the same lines as this, but you know what? I think that this 120 days is ticking away in the background. So we need to make sure that if we're going to get it to a regular council meeting, that we get it to a next available regulars council, council meeting, which is not, if it's not Monday, it has to be the next one after that. So I would support, I would support Councilor Casper's motion of, of getting a report back. And at that time, I also would, I would like to ask, and a separate motion, oh no, I'll wait for that motion. I was going to say that get information on FCM, current recommendations in that information.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Pearson. Councilor Casper did sort of-
Nine days. If it would be 90 days or-
Okay. Just want to address the fact that you made a motion. It does not have to be seconded because we're at Committee of the Whole. So just speaking to the motion, I would just like clarification from staff then as to what council meeting this could be on and will we meet that 120-day consultation period?
Your worship, I'd just like to add that we would need everything by Wednesday to have it ready for the meeting for Monday. You know? So I, the next meeting is July 10th.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Yes. Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I agree with my colleague here that it would be pretty much impossible to get it ready for the, the next regular council meeting. But because this is Cal, wouldn't the recommendation go to council to direct staff at the next council meeting?
Yeah. So, yeah, so Councilor Casper is making a motion to direct staff to bring to the next regular council, sorry, the next regular council meeting, all this information. Oh, sorry, July. We just discussed it would be July. Okay. That the Committee of the Whole recommends to council that Freedom Mobility direct the committee and community concerns, okay, in a package to staff regarding the proposed telecommunication towers at 5154 Suk Road, 2114 Otter Point Road, and let a report be brought forward to the July 10th regular council meeting. I think, yeah, just, yeah, just to, just, it's not on any meeting coming forward. Whatever comes out of this meeting will then bring it to a regular council meeting. And again, it's, sorry for everyone in the public, it's a unique situation that we're at a Committee of the Whole meeting. It's very strange, but we are not allowed to make binding decisions at a Committee of the Whole. We have to meet it when we sit as a council. So what we're trying to do is get this at the next available council meeting so a decision can be made. Councilor Pearson?
I would ask for a friendly motion that we could sever the two properties, the two That way I could participate in one.
Okay. And again, because this is Committee of the Whole, motions don't need to be seconded and we can just make the amendment to it. Okay. So I will call the question on the motion before us. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion's passed. So what that means for everyone in the audience is that on the July 10th regular council meeting, this will be discussed and hopefully we'll have more background information with some of your concerns from the applicant, Freedom Mobile. Sorry, July 10th.
Your worship, if I might, I'm just following up on what Councilor Pearson was saying. It has to be severed so that it's actually two separate motions, one for 5154 Suk Road and then a second motion.
Identical.
No, he removed himself from the-
So I'll just go to our corporate officer, Patty. I'm sorry, Mrs. Rears. Do we need to vote on each separately even though it's just providing direction to staff?
In order for Councilor Pearson to participate, I guess we can do that. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So let's try this again, everyone. The Committee of the Whole recommends to council that Freedom Mobility compile and address concerns from the committee and the community in a package to staff regarding the proposed telecommunication tower at 2614 Otter Point Road and that a report be brought forward to the July 10th, 2017 regular council meeting. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Councilor Pearson? Okay. Now for the second, everyone. The Committee of the Whole recommends to council that Freedom Mobility compile and address concerns from the, from the committee and the community in a package to staff regarding the proposed telecommunication tower at 5154 Suk Road and that a report be brought forward to the July 10th regular council meeting. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Okay. So now moving forward, excuse me, everybody, sorry, we still have another agenda item. So moving forward, I'd like to start, excuse me, everybody. If anybody is not here for our correspondence policy and procedures, you may leave if you wish and I'll give you a couple of seconds, but we still have to keep meeting. Excuse me, everyone. We actually haven't recessed this meeting, so if you have discussions, could you please move them outside? Okay. Moving on, council, let's start with 4.4 Correspondence Policy and Procedures. Thank you for coming, everyone. Okay. Policies and Procedures, 4.4. Okay. So do we have a staff report, Councilor Pearson? We are resuming our meeting. Do we have a staff report with regards? So thank you very much, everyone. We are at 4.4 Correspondence Policy and Procedures. Is there a staff member to speak to this or are we?
Yeah, I can speak to it if you'd like, Your Worship. So I, there's just been some changes that have occurred every time there's new administration that's coming into Sook and it involves the correspondence component of things. And so there's, I've sat down with the reception ladies and I'm trying to streamline the process so that it's a little bit more easier and that we're not also using so much paper and so much filing and et cetera going on. So I think the report as it's written is quite clear. What I'm really looking for from committee as a recommendation to council is to be able to go ahead and start a new email address. This, this process probably, tonight was probably a good example to use because I noticed quite a few of the communication was being directed just to council itself and was not being CC'd to info. So the mayor was having to forward information on to us so that we were all on the same page when it came to tonight's agenda. So if we develop a new address, which would be council@suk.ca and have it CC'd to CAO and/or this corporate officer as well, then that way we're not losing anything through the, through the cracks basically, so that things can be addressed as they should be. And so I just really need some feedback on that component of it as well as whether or not you like the idea of being able to streamline the process and not have so many, basically, copies of the correspondence being distributed through staff. Just, I've sort of basically wrote out a process, but I would like to put that into a policy format and then have you guys approve that. But I want to get started with the, the email, making sure that you're okay with that before I start moving things forward.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rears. And before I go to my fellow council members, I believe we already have council@suk.ca. That's, that's already an active email address that goes to all of us on council because when I email the rest of everyone, that's the email address that I use.
Yeah, we do. You're, you're absolutely right. We do have it, but it's not public knowledge. It's just for internal use only.
Okay. Great. Okay. So I'll go to Councilor Pearson, please.
Okay. So I guess my only question then is, is that will, will we be losing our individual email address? Okay, that's fine. Then I'm good with streamlining the process because it was a question I was going to ask anyways because it seems like we're getting duplicate emails of duplicate correspondence from several people. And so you have to think, I mean, how many people are looking at the email and creating the list? So, okay, thank you.
Councilor Loggins, then Casper?
I support it. I thank Ms. Rears for putting that together. However, I'm currently blocked from using council@suk.ca, so if that could be sorted out in the process, that would be great.
Councilor Casper?
I just want to make sure that whatever procedure is contemplated, that, that these, these correspondence comes to council and at an official public meeting, all copies, and that no actions be taken on any of the correspondence if it's addressed to mayor and council and asking for us to respond. I, I'm not prepared to delegate authority to staff to go out and do something when that's not what the public wants because they send their correspondence to us. So they want us to make a decision or make a comment on it. So I don't want to see that lost. The other thing that I'm, you know, I have to say it, I'm kind of disappointed that there's up to three people within this organization that are actually sending me correspondence. And I would have hoped that, and it's forwarding correspondence. And so I would have hoped that we would at least only have one person that does that. I don't know why it would take three people at different times of the week and even the day to actually forward us correspondence that's received on a daily, you know, manner. Because to me, that doesn't, it doesn't bode well as far as efficiency is concerned. You know, and please don't take that as a slight, but it just doesn't make sense. I don't think, you know, any of us would want to do that individually because, you know, I, it makes me wonder, well, why am I getting so many? And in, in some cases, I'm actually getting duplications. Okay? Now, the other thing I want to mention is this. I've had someone send me correspondence. So they've gone to the district website, sent it through a different mechanism, but they didn't want that correspondence to go to anybody else. They wanted it to go directly to me. They were sending me information. They weren't sending council information. They weren't sending staff information, nor were they sending the mayor information. They were sending information to me. So I don't want to see that lost because what happened is that they, they logged into this thing falsely assuming that it was going directly to me, but it went to everybody. And I, I sort of felt stupid because I, I actually didn't notice it, but it was only my name on the email, not anybody else's. So I felt kind of dumb because I hadn't responded. So you can see that sort of dilemma, right? So I just don't want to see certain things happen by default. And I don't know, I just, I just, maybe I'm old fashioned, you know? In some ways, you know, I, I kind of like the way things used to be. You know, you know, sorry, but it was pretty simple. If there was a matter that was of importance to any member of council, then, then they, and it was in correspondence, then they would bring it forward if it was sent to mayor and council. I just have assumed that we as a group would deal with those, that correspondence and act accordingly. And, and so that's all I'm asking is that we don't lose sight of that. I appreciate, I appreciate your work and what you're trying to accomplish. Don't get me wrong.
Thank you, Councilor Casper. Ms. Rears?
Yeah, that's, that's great. I'm, I'm all for that as well. I'm not trying to take any processes away from you. I'm just trying to improve on the processes. One of the other ideas that's been pitched in the report is that right now you have daily correspondence that's emailed to you all the time and I'm, I'm almost thinking that might be a bit too much and a bit cumbersome, especially when some of that communication doesn't get responded to because we have, our regular meetings don't occur every week. They occur, and they don't occur every day as a matter of fact either. So it's hard for, sometimes they sit there for a while and people are wondering if they've just been forgotten about. So two, two ideas that have been pitched here is that just having staff touch base with those people, letting them know, especially if it's addressed to mayor and council, which means you as a whole therefore should go forward to it in agenda, that just to touch base with them, letting them know what's going to happen with their correspondence. That is going to be forwarded to such and such meeting so that they're not thought that they've been forgotten about. And also rather than doing daily correspondence emails to you, to do weekly correspondence and actually, that way you, you can know to check in every Friday or every Monday or whatever and have that situated on our civic web portal, which is the new iCompass system. And it can sit there if you would like. It can be open to all, all of our residents if you want it to be an open folder basically so that people can check in on it as well. want it to be an open folder, basically, so that people can check in on it as well. That would probably lead a bit to more transparency as well.
Great. Counselor Parkinson?
Does that mean that people's names are removed from the letters, when they're open for the public? So then how do we see who they're from?
Good point. I guess we could have one folder for you, and if you want to have an open folder, yeah. We usually leave, we usually leave their name. We don't, we'll just redact their personal information, like telephone, email, address.
A name, right? Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Counselor Ray? Oh, sorry, Counselor Parkinson.
That's okay, I forgot my second one.
Counselor Ray? Okay, thank you, Your Worship. My thinking is, two things, I do appreciate the council mail, so whether it comes daily, or it comes weekly, probably weekly would be less work for staff, and we would get it all at once. The second piece, when I was acting mayor last year, one of my concerns was exactly that, mail was coming into the district, and there wasn't being anything that was going back out, so while I sat for those two months, anybody who sent a letter in, got an acknowledgement with a letter going out. I think it's important that we have something in process, so that people do know that we get their correspondence, and it just doesn't go out into never, never land. So I'm certainly open, whatever makes it work easier, make sure that correspondence doesn't fall through the cracks, I support it.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Counselor Parkinson?
So what happens to the letters that are sent in by mail to the district? Because we're not putting any mail into the binders anymore? So are they stored somewhere?
They are included as part of your daily correspondence. They're scanned in with all the emails, yep.
Okay, so then you...
So we would condense that down to weekly, if you're supportive of that?
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, if I mailed in a letter to the district, what happens to that letter, the actual letter?
The letter is filed accordingly to the LGA File System, Recurrence Management System, Classification System.
Yep.
So, and then copies are made, and sent to whoever it's addressed to, so if it's addressed to mayor and council, then it would be part of your daily correspondence email, or if it's addressed to somebody else, or if somebody needs to be CC'd on it, like it's a development issue or something, then it would be CC'd to, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So just to add my two cents, I too want to thank you for wanting to streamline this. I know it sounds like a silly thing that we're debating emails and letters, but it's important, because as the rest of the council said, it's, people are trying to contact us, and there needs to be some sort of response. So my first thought when I read this, I liked all of your suggestions, emails that come through at info@suuk generally are, they seem to be lots of different service groups, and lots of people even outside of the community that are letting us know things. They're letting us know that celebrations are happening, or something's happening. So for me, that can flow through on a weekly basis, and as long as there's an automatic response, if it's getting close to that time, that goes back to them, saying it'll be forwarded on to council, that would suffice for my own personal thoughts and needs. If someone emails directly to you individually, obviously that flows right through daily, and I would also like to see if the council@suuk email address goes public, which I think is fantastic, that should just flow through daily too, because that's someone wanting to contact directly to council. So then council can respond immediately to that as well. The info one, I love what you've suggested, so I think I'm just regurgitating what you wrote in your report, so I really like it. So I'll ask, does anybody want to move that council? Oh, thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, so now, that brings us to an end. There's no new business other than what was received for correspondence, so a motion to adjourn, please. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, and a motion to move back in camera, please. Reconvene. All those in favor? Motion's passed, thank you.